City Commission, it's Monday, July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven P. M. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have roll call, please.
Denison.
Here.
Whedon.
Here.
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Present.
Swam.
Here.
Your quorum.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to approve the agenda.
Sean will make said motion.
Thank you.
This is money I'll support.
I'd like to ask a question. Option three, I'd like to have it removed from the agenda.
But we just had a motion to approve, and we have support.
And I have a motion, and I'm asking to remove option three.
Option three, which one?
But I just had.
Number four.
A motion, and I just had approval. So let's vote on it and see if it doesn't pass, and then you can. We have roll call, please.
Whedon.
Yes.
Bianski.
No.
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Denison.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving down to public comment on agenda items only, if you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the minutes.
Norma Ferris, three zero four North Oak, what is Live Buchanan or Liv Buchanan? Which one is it? And what is it?
It's Liv. Well, they're gonna come up and I'll have them give you an explanation and just have it.
All right.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment? Seeing none. Let's move down to the consent agenda.
I have comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah. You have, you have written, written comments?
Um, yeah, so what we're gonna do is there's a copy of everybody's comments that was listed on the back table, if you would like to read everything, quite a few of them, they're very long. So we're just gonna go a sentence on what they said. So I have Angela Lowry voicing her objection to passing resolution two thousand and twenty-four oh seven twenty-one, Liv Buchanan support. I have Scott King and Carla Johnson opposing any approval of Liv Buchanan. I have Alan Robot, who would suggest holding off until the November election, when we know it was in power. There's a significant support for recreating the DDA and a DDA shift of power to downtown Buchanan from non-business, non-property, non-resident. That com- uh, composes of Liv Buchanan to a majority board approved by the city commission consisting of property and business owners and principles of business in the downtown. There's a lot more to that one. Jennifer is, I'm hopefully, Marcelago, objecting to the matter of funding for Liv Buchanan. I have Suzanne Hipsher objecting to approving resolution two thousand and twenty-four oh seven twenty-one. I have Tamara Sinner, who is objecting to approving Liv Buchanan proposal. I have Don Ryman, who opposes the approval of Liv Buchanan proposal, and I have one in favor from Randy Hendrickson, asking to embrace the Liv Buchanan program. That is it.
Okay, thank you. Moving down to the consent agenda, someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, can we roll call, please?
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Denison.
Yes.
And Whedon.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving down to reports by departments, committees, and boards, starting with community development report. Community Development Director Rich Murphy and Assistant Community Development Director, Main Street Manager Ashley Riegel.
Good evening, I'm Ashley Riegel, I'm the Executive Director of Liv Buchanan. Um, and to answer Norma's question, we are a nonprofit that was formed to revitalize downtown. We were tasked to apply for the Michigan Main Street and try to achieve that status. So projects we've been working on include Munchy Mondays, that has the food trucks come out, we did the library murals on the wall. We brought string lights to Days Avenue. In progress, we have the trail markers that are going throughout our downtown. We have billboards on U. S. Twelve. And we have some plans as well in the future. We are hoping to be able to put together a master plan for the common, so we can envision our future together there. Um, and continue finding and supporting local small businesses through our incubator and beyond. So the Business Incubator on the corner of Days and Front is also a project of Liv Buchanan. So I hope that answers your question, Norma. That's our basic activity report, but I, if you have any questions on it, we can talk about that, or I'll move into talk about the Fall Festival. You guys have a printout of all that as well. Okay, so we're hoping to bring back a Fall Festival for a long time, over a hundred years, Buchanan had a Fall Festival back in the nineteen twenties, and I believe it was, and our historian is here, you guys had the Jubilee Fest. Um, and we had Harvest Phil- uh, Festival, we had Old Mill Fest, a lot of memories were had in this town over those festivals. We'd like to bring one of those back, especially with the absence of Thrill in the Hill, we find that our community really needs an annual event again, we have a lot of people asking and wanting that. So we have earmarked October fifth as our primary day, that's Saturday, um, of homecoming weekend. And we've already met with a lot of different organizations and business owners that are interested in collaborating, and we think it'll be really fun. We have the Art Center, the Preservation Society, um, the Library, a bunch of different groups that are wanting to participate and provide something. So I'm asking for your permission for Liv Buchanan, along with all these other groups, to use the Common primarily on the fifth. There might be some setup and tear down on the fourth and sixth.
Someone like to make a motion?
Um, before we move, this is written for the fifth and sixth? Is that correct, or is it just the fifth and sixth?
There might be some.
There might be some setup and tear down.
Is there any money that's gonna come from the taxpayers, because we stopped the Thrill on the Hill because of money?
If you support the next resolution to help fund Liv Buchanan, we will use those funds to help start this festival. We're hoping that it breaks even at least our first year with the sales from our beer wine cider tent.
You made a, you said hope, that makes me very nervous. How much staff is gonna have to be used in City Hall? Because City Hall pretty much shut down for the Thrill on the Hill. It wasn't just the money, and that's what nobody understands. How much is the Chamber gonna participate in this, in taking this over and taking the lead on this, or the Lions Club? So that City Hall doesn't have to.
I'll be working on it, but that's it, um, as far as City Hall staff, except if the city provides support that you guys would be, of course, asked about, but I don't imagine we'd need any this year. The Chamber is involved, they've been at some of our meetings, and they're interested in participating, and I hope provide volunteers.
When did you guys start planning this? It just kinda seems like a real short window to try to pull this off, and that.
We've been planning it for months, we have an outstanding issue, which is we don't have the funds to hire a headlining act at this point. So we have to have approval to move forward from you in two ways.
Sure. What does a headlining act run?
It depends on you. It varies a lot.
Part of it is, it's hard finding, I mean, a lot of the good acts are already booked out that far.
Sure.
Um, and then the other thing is trying to find one of those really good acts that will bring a whole crowd of people with them, you know, like the big traveling ones with big, they're hard to, they're hard to find right now, because they're all booked out.
Sure.
And to answer your question more thoroughly, we've been talking about this event since our inception. And hemmed and hawed, and luckily this year, we have so many other organizations and groups that are already interested in participating. The Scarecrow Ladies are, have been amazing and interested in participating as well. And the Library's doing their pumpkin jamboree, so there's just already so much collaboration that we know we can pull off a great, well-coordinated event in the time.
We're talking about bringing back some old, oldie but goodies, like bed races and things like that. I'm imagining there would be some street closers, too, maybe?
We've talked about that, if we're able to do the, um, if we're able to coordinate the bed race, I don't know if you guys remember that, it sounds like it was pretty popular when it was in, uh, in full swing. If we did that, or a boxcar derby or something, we would need to close the road.
What's, what street would you be closing? I didn't.
Oh, we don't know, it would probably be Oak Street, because it has pretty low traffic.
Is that where it used to be held at? Was it Oak?
No, it was held on Front Street.
Cause you want the hill? Or no, you don't want the hill?
Right now, right now, in the middle of Front Street.
I mean, that, you had to be flying down.
That would be probably something we need. We need to consult our business owners to see if they'd be okay with that, but one of those streets surrounding the common would be our, our pleasure.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the use of the common?
I'll move to approve the use of the common, the old-fashioned Fall Festival, uh, around October fourth, fifth, and sixth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll support.
Twenty, wait, wait, that's, yeah, that's the wrong year.
No, two thousand and twenty-five. You know, I, the thing about it is, is you're coming and asking us for permission, and you have no plan. I really didn't wanna say too much more than that, but it'd be nice to have you come here and say, we've got this all put together, we just need this for these dates. It's already the end of July, you're not gonna get a ban because your dad won't have it booked. You know, you don't have any money, you don't have any gatherings of it, you don't have any organization of it.
You made a motion, is there support?
Well, I know you wanna cut me off, but the explanation was necessary, two thousand and twenty-five.
Yeah, we heard.
Second and.
Is there a second?
Second and voted.
Relax, I'm asking if there's support. We wanna put your oxygen down, if you're gonna lose your breath there. I don't hear any support. So that motion dies. Anybody else like to make a motion?
Sean will make a motion to approve the use of the common old-fashioned Fall Festival as presented.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, can we roll call, please?
Swam.
Yes.
Denison.
Yes.
Whedon.
Yes.
Bianski.
No.
Money.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, now we have the fun one. I was hired on October first, twenty. I was hired on October first, two thousand and twenty-one, and given the express task by the commission to make Buchanan a designated Michigan Main Street community.
Why don't you ask Rich to take over for you, Ashley?
I'm fine. The resolution and agreement before you represent two and a half years of work. The city of Buchanan sought to become a designated Michigan Main Street community, because acceptance into this program opens doors to extensive technical support, capacity building, and unique funding opportunities. The state of Michigan participates in this national program, Main Street America, because it works. Participation in the Michigan Main Street program isn't easy. It requires cooperative effort towards a common goal, a unified vision shared by business owners, residents, volunteers, and municipalities. To be selected as a Michigan Main Street is a notable. Is a notable achievement and honor, with Buchanan poised to join a select group of just twenty-two other communities in the state. In January, Liv Buchanan submitted our application to become a designated Michigan Main Street, to achieve this milestone for Buchanan, put us on the map, and be granted specialized attention and resources from the state of Michigan. Representatives from the state visited our small town, reviewed our application, and gave us feedback on best practices and what they would like to see moving forward. This is what is before you tonight. Approval of these items is required before Buchanan can become a designated Michigan Main Street. This is a make or break moment for the Main Street program in Buchanan. Voting no would throw away two and a half years of work and put us behind at least another three years until the next Main Street application cycle opens. Voting yes signals your community, signals your commitment and belief that our downtown is worth investing in.
Good job, Ashley. Anybody like to make a motion?
I would like to move to postpone this resolution. Till after we know a little bit more about it, I mean, we, um, we, I can wait for discussion.
I'll support.
Can we roll call, please?
Whedon.
We're gonna have discussion, I believe, right?
Okay, we're gonna have a discussion.
Well, I'll start this out, because I think this is a great program. But, a lot of the information that we have received has not given us time to really put our teeth into it. I mean, yes, we've had two and a half years, and, and that, I'm not going against anything that you or Rich have done with this. But I would like to see this commission, as soon as possible, call a special meeting, and quite possibly, uh, get our attorney involved. And, and look at this, and, and just, uh, like I said, before we pull the trigger on this thing, I just think we need to have all of our i's dotted and t's crossed. And, and that's my opinion.
Yeah, I'd have to agree with Larry on that, there's quite a few areas in the contract that I struggled with, uh, ahead of tonight's meeting. Again, based on my conversations with the S. M. E. D. C. in different capacities, you know, I do feel like they're a negotiable group, um, as long as it makes sense, they're willing to work with us, I would hope. But a quarter million dollar plus commitment, I do believe it needs our attorney's eyes on something like that.
Any other comments? You have roll call, please?
Whedon.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Denison.
No.
Thank you.
Ashley, I just wanted to say one more thing. Please don't take the vote is, is implying that we don't support the program. And I think that the majority of us up here, since Liv Buchanan started, uh, our intention was to bring economic vitality to this city of Buchanan. And I think the strides that you have made in this two and a half years can absolutely not be dismissed. I think your passion and drive to do great things for Buchanan, and the, the people that sit on that board have stuck with you this entirety of the time for that reason. I think that having Rich and, and doing what he does, and you guys work in tandem, uh, postponement is not indicative of our final decision. I please want you to know that, that this is something that, the, the level of importance on this topic for postponement is absolutely necessary to ensure that we all make the right decisions, not just for Liv Buchanan, but for all of Buchanan. So please walk away from this with your head held high, knowing that this is, this is not a no, this is not a yes, this is, hey, let's give this its, its warranted attention. And I, I believe that everybody up here will give it the same amount of passion that you had tonight, that you were expressing, so don't think that it doesn't go unnoticed.
And, and I, I also, I wanna comment on that, because I wanna urge that we do this as quickly as possible. We, we need to set to, sit down, put together a, a special session, and get this done immediately.
Agreed.
I disagree, one hundred percent.
Okay, cause can we have, just to clarify motion-wise, you, you postpone the resolution.
Right.
But now, there's a second part with the contract. Are you saying, because I've heard lawyers, are you wanting the attorney to review? I just wanna make sure it's clarified, that we know what we're doing on next steps.
I'll take a stand on it, I'll take a stand on it, we don't need a lawyer to review, it's already been written by a lawyer. Who wrote it? What lawyer wrote it?
This was sent by M. E. D. C.
So their lawyers wrote it.
One of the, it was an example from another community.
So some lawyer's already written it. We've all read it extensively.
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify, so we know.
Extensively, first we didn't know anything about it, now we've read it extensively.
I read it since Friday, Sean, get the bug out of your backside, I'm telling you right now, get it out. If you wanna have it out, we can step outside.
Point of order.
Point of order.
I've had enough of you clear up to my nose. I'm not gonna be treated like.
Ashley, I apologize that you have to.
No, she's, I'm speaking, I'll bite your finger right off.
Dan, point of order.
Ashley, I'm sorry that you have to feel that way when you're speaking to this commission, to me, it's really disappointing. I sit on that board, and I watch Randy Hendrickson, Tracy Dippo, and all the other volunteers who've given two years of their life, working their butts off. They've invited every business owner from downtown, and none of them wanna partake, for the most part, they'd rather be toxic and spread lies. We have written emails from the M. E. D. C. saying everything that Liv Buchanan has done is up to par and legal. And all they're trying to do is make our community better, but yet they get beaten up and harassed and, and spoken ill of, it's absolutely disgraceful.
Everything that just came out of your mouth is disgusting, just now. Just totally disgusting. You destroyed the DDA.
Can we, can we?
You destroyed the DDA.
Can we please, can we please have roll call?
We already did, yeah.
There was no motion on the second part of the agreement.
So.
I just.
I'm just trying to clarify, because you guys.
That commentary at the end there, though, is.
It's unacceptable.
We have a postponement.
As I shared with you, Sean, I think there's holes in this that can be filled, and it's not, it's not a slap in the face.
That's fine, everyone else, everyone else got to say something, I was saying what I thought.
I just felt like we had time to work through this.
So we have a motion on the floor to postpone.
You had a motion on the floor, you've already voted on it.
But the motion was also, I believe, to send this to the attorneys for review.
No, no, it was just commentary.
That's what I'm trying to clarify, if there's a second part, but we have.
I moved to postpone, period.
I think that's, that is Tim's decision on that side of it, I'd like that to happen, but we didn't make a motion related to the attorneys.
They, you, the next part is part of that resolution with the agreement. If you're wanting to postpone with the city manager review, I'm just trying to make sure you're not wanting to review the resolution, you're talking about the agreement.
I think they're talking about the M. O. U. that was part of that.
They haven't got to that motion yet, but.
Yeah, the, that actual.
The contract, yeah.
So what?
So you're, you're on considering an agreement by and among the city of Buchanan, Liv Buchanan, to provide economic development, historical preservation, and promotion of downtown Buchanan. So this is the M. A. Um, O. U. that they sent over.
Correct.
This is what you're on, so you, you postponed the resolution, but I'm, this is the agreement part.
The first, the first resolution as a general, um, be there, or be therefore ordained that you financially support. Done. The second resolution is the agreement itself.
What specifically?
So theoretically, if you wanted to postpone this discussion, you'd have to have another motion to postpone for the agreement resolution. And then we can call the meeting and look at it again.
I think they go hand in hand.
I agree. I mean, I, I thought when we made the motion, it was for everything, not broken out one by one, so, is that everyone else's?
No, because what was in the packet?
Well, they're separated in the packet.
No, there's two, there's, there's the actual contract, but there's a resolution.
I know the resolution, I've got the resolution.
That was the form behind the contract.
But what else is in the packet?
It's in there.
The contract was.
Show me, I wanna see it.
I got it.
There's a, there's an actual contract.
I got it, Dan. Hang on, we've got it right here.
This is the contract.
There.
Okay.
These are the two different sets.
And then one of them is a city resolution on top.
I've got it all here, but I read it all as one.
Yeah, no, there's two separate forms.
There's a M. O. U., which is basically the contract, and then there is a resolution from the city.
That's this, that's that. This is what we're voting, this is what we just voted on?
No, that.
The two pages?
That's the resolution.
This is the resolution.
Can I?
What we did, what we postponed was the money.
No, you postponed the resolution.
We were on the resolution.
So, we need to postpone the money.
Well, we need to, we need to vote on this one first.
No, we already voted on this, we already postponed it this.
You postponed the resolution, you're on to the agreement.
We're on to the.
Before, can I just briefly let you know, ahead of your discussion? M. E. D. C. extended our application into August, because the first resolution that we, as a city, supported, which was vague, and said you had a general support for Liv Buchanan, and did not have any mention of financial support, was rejected. I want you to understand that as you move forward, that the state requires, because what they will be giving is five years of technical support and resources. They require the municipality to commit that also, if you would like to be a part of the Michigan Main Street program. Of course, it's your decision to not do so, I would like you to know that is a requirement for five years.
All right, so on number four now, would anybody like to make a motion for number four?
I'll motion to postpone.
I'll support.
Discussion? Roll call.
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Denison.
No.
Whedon.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Moving down to. Rich Murphy.
Uh, you'll remind, you'll be reminded, commissioners, that, uh, for the last year, we, uh, with our excellent committee, um, passed and adopted the Riverfront, Buchanan Riverfront Master Plan, uh, of which, uh, one of the priority projects was an ADA accessible kayak launch. Uh, you'll be reminded that we were awarded, uh, the D. N. R. grant of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, uh, several months ago. And, uh, at that time, uh, I told you that I would come back with the local match, and I have done that, so. I have the local match raised.
Thank you.
I did it all myself, and Ashley, and you got every penny of it, so.
All right.
It's not costing the taxpayers any money. We also got the master plan funded by A. E. P. So essentially, um, we've leveraged two hundred and thirty thousand dollars with an extra eighty thousand dollars match. And, uh, I wanted to be at this comfort level, because that was my pledge to you several months ago, when I said I would be back once I have the, uh, local match, so that we can go under contract with our awesome engineering team, Abbott Marsh, who not only led the master plan, but were instrumental in conceptual design for us, uh, being successful on the kayak launch grant. So, uh, this is the contract that I, asking, uh, us to go under contract on, so we can proceed with the project, um, which will be designing engineering services for, from Abbott Marsh. Uh, Engineer Mike Morphy from Abbott Marsh is here this evening, uh, Mike's been instrumental throughout the master planning process, as well as the kayak project process. So, um, with that, I'd just like your approval, uh, so we can, uh, move forward on our, our first, uh, project from our master plan. Uh, remind you, we have other projects that we've applied for, um, this year's funding that we'll find out in December if we've had it, so we have a lot of momentum, and, uh, it's very exciting. We're engaging now with a lot of the members of the, um, handicap accessible, handicap community, on what we can learn from them as far as using the facility. So it's just a, a great project, uh, I was over at, uh, Corwell Health in St. Joe, uh, just last Thursday for a check presentation, because they were a partner in the project, um, of the local match, twenty-five thousand dollar check. Uh, Michigan Gateway is another, um, major funder of this, as is, um, Bearing Community Foundation, uh, Fred Upton Foundation, uh, and some local businesses from Buchanan. So everybody has really stepped up to get us to this point, uh, now we go under contract with Abbott Marsh, and we build the, uh, launch.
Someone like to make a motion?
This is money I'd move to approve the engineering proposal for the St. Joe kayak launch as presented.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support. Excellent work, I mean, make it easy when you come to a senator you pay for. Thank you, good work.
Question, the discussion?
You raised every dime, so the city doesn't have.
In front of you.
Okay, well, I mean, but this eighty thousand dollars. Okay. Well, I mean, but this $80,000, is it plus the 230,000? So we got $310,000. And this is basically the picture you gave me. You know, I'm glad about it. I mean, it's been out there, but I'm really nervous about people using a kayak launch on the river. And we don't really have access from the road, so we're kind of starting in the basement before we work our way up. I mean, I'm happy for free money and I congratulate you. I seriously congratulate you.
Can we get that in the minutes? I mean, do well deserve pat on the back. I think you owe him one.
It's not going to come very often.
Hey, give him, give him what he's got it.
You know, instead of leaving it alone, you got to bug it. You got to poke it. But I said thank you very much, didn't I?
You did.
Yeah.
Noted.
We have a roll call, please?
Yep. Money.
Yes.
Swann.
Yes.
Denison.
Yep.
Whedon.
Yes.
Bionski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving down to election information report.
I'm just giving a shout out for anybody that wants to file for city commissioner. Your deadline is tomorrow at 4:00 P. M. with me. If you would like to join this crew.
They'll be following and they'll be filing in the door. They're super excited.
I'm the nicest guy down here, too.
What was it?
I said I'm the nicest guy down here.
Moving down to expenditures. Do you have questions?
No, Sean, I don't have a question.
Somebody like to make a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the expenditures as presented.
Is there support?
I'll support.
Roll call, please.
Swann.
Yes.
Denison.
Yep.
Whedon.
Yes.
Bionski.
Well, I don't even get discussion, so yes.
Money?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Moving down to communications. Do you have any?
Budget amendments.
Budget amendment.
The finals.
Oh, I'm sorry. Someone want to make that motion?
I'll move to approve the final budget amendments as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support. Got discussion.
Discussion? Comments, questions? Confessions? May roll call, please?
Denison.
Yeah.
Whedon.
Yes.
Bionski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swann.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Any communications? Public comment and non-agenda items. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium. State your name for the minutes.
My name is Beverly Archer. I have been a resident of Buchanan since 1978. To be a better citizen, I've tried to make it to these meetings to know what's happening in my community. And I realize that we are all contending with issues. And there are good points and bad points to the programs that are put forth. And everything needs to be discussed and weighed. I understand that. What is disappointing time and again is when I have attended that there is a member of this commission who reacts in such a manner with mannerisms and language that are on the level of a back alley punk. And I'm getting tired of it. I will always be here, but it's, it's bad for our community, especially when we have TV cameras here recording it. And I think that if a person's going to serve on the commission, they should be able to conduct themselves in an intelligent, civilized, adult manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Albert Maes. My last name is spelled M A I S. And I'm a judicial candidate. I'm running for fifth district court judge here in Bering County. And I'm on the ballot for the November election. A little background information about myself. I've been an attorney for 25 years as a litigator in private practice, basically a general practitioner. However, over the course of those 25 years, I've always felt the need to serve the community as well. So from 2003 to 2016, I had a contract with Bering County to provide indigent defense to those that needed it, many from this area. In fact, I had the territory from Bering Springs all the way down to the county line. And over the course of those 25 years, while maintaining my private practice, I've represented over 1,000 criminal defendants along the way. It certainly taught me a lot of valuable experience, how to be in the courtroom, how to address juries, how to deal with the public. I basically practiced before every judge in this county since 1999. They all know me very well. Also, I've worn many other hats as well. Being an attorney, I've handled hundreds of divorce cases, custody cases, paternity cases, child support cases, handled contests of wills, guardianships, adoptions, even civil law. I've done real estate as well and landlord tenant matters as well to boot. And now I'm wearing another hat, being the deputy city attorney for Niles, where I handled the prosecution of their ordinance cases. The position I'm running for is a nonpartisan position, so obviously I can't tell you what side of the aisle I'm on. And that's a good thing because obviously biases have no place in our courtroom, whether it's political bias or any other sort of bias. When you pick a judge, you want that person to be not only knowledgeable about the law, but that they have common sense and certainly more than anything are fair and impartial. I mean, when you go to court, obviously there's going to be a winner and a loser. That's just the nature of the beast. But what you want is for that litigant that is in our county, that we are serving, to ensure to them that no matter what the outcome is, they leave there feeling that they were treated fairly and with dignity. So hopefully I've given you some food for thought. You know, this coming election is in November. Again, I think I am well qualified for the position. I ask you to please speak to any judges that you may know, attorneys that you may know, people that work in the courtroom, police officers, and ask them who Albert Maes is and if he's worthy enough to be in that position. I assure you, the answer will be yes. So thank you very much for your time. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Will you repeat the position you were running for?
Yes, it's fifth district court judge.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public?
Thank you. I'm Amy Byrd. I'm the current Bering County prosecuting attorney. And my, my answer would be yes for Albert Maes as well. I've worked with Albert for basically my whole career, which has been 16 years in Bering County. I served at the Niles courthouse for three years when he had the contract there. A little bit about me, I'm a Bering County native. I grew up in Benton Township. My family has a farm up there, L. H. Pigott and Girls off of Napier, if anyone's familiar. That's where I grew up and I live there now with my family. As I said, I've been with the office for 16 years. When Steve Perangeli stepped down, I was appointed by the circuit court bench and I do intend to run for this position in November. I've prosecuted any manner of cases from people driving without a driver's license to homicide case and everything in between. I work with law enforcement to determine if charges should be filed, to see what kind of evidence is necessary and to work with them to bring cases to trial if necessary. Something that's very important to me is I serve on the drug treatment court for Bering County, assisting people through the probation system who find themselves in the criminal justice system because of an addiction. On the other side of that, I am very passionate about prosecuting people who bring drugs into our community and are distributing. So I've been active on both sides of that. I think both of those areas have to be addressed for there to be some sort of change in that area that we see so many problems in our communities. I have an 11-year-old daughter. I have a seven-year-old son. They inspire me when I'm at work every day to make the right decisions. I think that safe communities are strong communities where families and businesses can grow. I think we get there by enforcing the rule of law and encouraging those types of movement, whether it be business or families into the area that way. I think it brings more opportunities for all of us and I hope to do my part in bringing more opportunities to Bering County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Norma's chomping at the bit.
Norma Fears, 304 North Oak. I would like to ask of you, when you make these wonderful things up, such as Main Street, the redoing it, such as water, when it is put on paper, would you tell me what year this is going to be done? I understand it takes time, but I would like to know what year I can expect to see this finished.
Are you talking about the infrastructure project?
Yes.
Okay.
When?
Hopefully by the.
We're having a pre-construction meeting next week.
And we'll have that nailed down.
Then they'll line up the schedules and they'll let us know.
You will let me know?
Yes, I will.
Okay. And then I read in the paper, August 30th. What year?
August 30th what?
I saw that in a paper of the city of Buchanan. I can't give you the.
Regarding what? The infrastructure project?
A, one of them coming to Buchanan, but I'd like to know what year.
You're talking about the Front Street project and the sewer project. Is that what you're talking?
No, I think I'm talking about the hotel.
Oh.
When?
I don't know. I couldn't tell you.
It all depends on construction.
Okay. Election is coming. You would be evaluated. We will say yes or no.
Well, Norma, I'll see you for two more years if you're okay with that.
Thank you, Norma. Anyone else wish to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none. Moving down to executive comments. The management comments?
Okay, a few updates here. The Front Streets project, Norma, hopefully will get started this year. Loan closing is scheduled for July 30th with a pre-construction meeting on that same morning. It'll include the two contracts, downtown reconstruction and the Front Street and the Street Signal project. For the Front Street retaining law, we received the preliminary drawings and we provided comments to the engineering firm we're working with. We're expecting final drawings for our review and after that, the drawings will be sealed and the bid documents will be prepared. As far as the McCoy Creek Culvert, Days Avenue, the Eagle permit, the public notice period has ended. They had one comment regarding the stream and that was received from the D N R. And we received word just tonight that the permit will be issued for the project as it is. I've been working with Mike Morphy on this project and they've done a great job as far as communicating on a permit. And they cited, we cited that time is of essence and we have limited resources. They're going to issue the permit for the project as it is. The structural design of the new sheet pile wall is completed pending review in comparison with the geotechnical data. The draft bid documents are being developed and we hope to receive a set for review this week or next. And so we're making good progress on both projects and we hope to complete them both this year. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Whedon?
I'm good.
Mr. Swann?
Yeah, contentious meeting tonight. I guess we'll start by, you know, I have a ton of faith in the Liv Buchanan group, so I want to take some of my time to thank them for all the effort that's gone in over the last two and a half years. And, you know, I do have faith that there'll be lots more opportunity to come as we fill in some of these questions that are out there. Big thank you to our donors, Seven Engines High Profile, Fred Upton Foundation, Michigan Gateway Community Foundation, Corwell Health, Bering Community Foundation, and Rich and the team on all the work they did to get that funding for the kayak launch. Really proud of you guys for that. Just looking, not for tonight, but an update on where we stand on getting that board realignment put together for discussion purposes, if we get a meeting, just kind of curious where that stands. And then with the culvert, just making sure I give a plug for keeping the library in the loop. I know Tim's on top of that. He's been in front of it, so I know they appreciate that communication. That's all I have.
Mr. Bionski?
Nothing like threatening to bite the mayor's finger off in front of a judge and a district attorney, is there?
Yeah, that was interesting.
And I'm pretty proud of being called an alley cat because our substructure and our infrastructure is 100 years old. We got a sinkhole on Days Avenue that we're waiting to get fixed because it's been neglected because everybody wants to come down here and be nice. We had a sewer break because everybody wants to be nice down here. Now, am I out of line? Occasionally I am. But I dare anybody, anybody, to deal with what I've dealt with, especially the last six months, because I disagreed with all of them about how they did things. And I disagree with their fiduciary or lack of fiduciary responsibility. We have $100 million worth of infrastructure that we have to fix and we're getting into fights over $50,000 a year when the D D A was destroyed by this man, which is very more beneficial to the city in getting grants than Main Street is. Main Street, even though it's a good program, should be ran under the D D A. So yeah, I got a temper and I'm not scared of showing it. And I got two more years of being in this office, so you've already tried to recall me. You've already asked me to quit and I'm not even on the ballot in November, but your mayor is. So think about that. Thank you.
Mr. Whedon, or Money?
Well, I want to start by thanking Ashley and Rich for all the hard work they've put in. And I want to see this thing taken care of as rapidly as possible so we can meet that August deadline. I think there's just, like I said before, I think there's just a few i's that need to be dotted and t's to be crossed and that's where I stand on that. So as far as the hard work and everything that you've put into it, I applaud you for everything that you've done, along with all of the staff that's down here. I want to thank Mike Baker and all his crew, the cell jop operation that worked over here on this break. They did a great job, got it taken care of in pretty quick order and without much problems to the stream, regardless of what people may or may not have said. You know, there was no, basically threat to the public. It was all taken care of in just a small section here that, that doesn't really impact you very much. I can remember that stream years ago when Clark Equipment used to dump into it and all the sewage used to run out of it. My brother and I learned to shoot our BB guns down there by the sewage treatment plant, shooting at things that used to float down this river, so, or this stream. So once again, reiterate the fact that this commission always has a hard job to do. We faced one of those tonight. And with that, thank you.
I so badly want to give you my resignation right now. But I'm not going to because I know the jerk next to me is going to laugh. For the last 10 months, I've had my name run through the mud. I've been called unethical, said that I've done this, that, and the other. Now I apparently am having a homosexual affair with a business owner downtown. That's a good one.
That was the new one.
These people have no couth and they don't care about the community at all. They'll say whatever they want in order to get elected this fall. So remember that when you're going to the election this fall. If you want more of this, vote for his friends. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I don't know any of them.
I'll make said motion.
And it wasn't a gay man that accused him of being gay.
I support.
It was a straight woman.
We have a roll call, please?
Whedon.
Yes.
Bionski.
People are a bunch of losers.
Money.
Yes.
And you?
Yes.
Touch me again. Touch me again.
Adjourn.